To this meeting of the Milton Planning Board, this is our final and 28th meeting of fiscal year 2014. And when we next meet, we will be in fiscal year 2015. So, let's introduce ourselves.
Emily Ennis, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
William Clark, planning director.
I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. And we have reserved seats for our other members, who will introduce themselves when they get here. Now, we're going to go first to citizens speak. And we have an interesting, an interesting point. We have a letter from Cindy Christensen saying, "Please read my letter at Citizens Speak." And it seems to me that maybe we'll read this letter tonight, but that we should have a policy that if you want to speak at Citizens Speak, you either show up to speak, or you send one of your kids, or if you have no kids, one of your friends, or if you have no friends, your mother or father. Does that do it?
I think having people be here in person to speak makes sense. The only time I think we've accepted letters to read on the record is when it's been for a public hearing.
Okay, should we read this letter?
You've already said that we would, so yeah, I think that's fine.
I think that just because Cindy Christensen didn't understand that she had to be here in person.
Yes.
So we'll make, this is the exception, and henceforth, we will enforce the rule. So no letters, expecting them to be read.
Right.
This is what it says. "As Milton develops its master plan and discusses plans for condominiums and other multifamily development, I want to suggest that the town adopt a public health policy for new multifamily homes. I'm asking that the appropriate town board's committees, departments, and town meeting set policy to require that developers of new multifamily units designate their buildings to be smoke-free. Now is the time to think about this, given the influx of plans for multifamily homes in Milton. I think most developers see the public good and financial benefits of making their residential buildings smoke-free. These policies have been shown to increase property value, reduce maintenance costs, reduce risk of fire, and reduce residents' exposure to secondhand smoke. There are many other benefits. One local developer told me that all of his buildings are smoke-free, and his tenants love it. Additionally, there is much legal precedence in Mass, which is short for Massachusetts, and across the country for smoke-free policies for multifamily homes. Condominium trustees and unit owners in many Massachusetts towns, with help from their local boards of health, are changing condominium bylaws to designate their shared air to be smoke-free. Informed buyers now look for homes and buildings with no smoking policies. Milton should start by making our new developments smoke-free. Please let me know your follow-up plans for my request, and whether you would like any additional information from me on this topic. Is this something that should be a warrant article? Can the planning board require or suggest that developers make their multifamily units smoke-free? Thank you. Cindy L. Christensen, town meeting member, precinct seven. Well, the questions, we don't respond to questions at Citizens Speak, but we have the questions, and we'll talk to Ms. Christensen about it. Or a member, but not a quorum. We'll speak to Ms. Christensen about it. Okay, who else wants to be heard at Citizens Speak? Why is Sheffield screaming?
A and R.
No, maybe he's in awe of the board. We were wondering why you were standing, Bob.
That's exactly what we expected you to say.
That's what I thought. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Peter Mullen, 19 Gaskins Road, town meeting member, precinct two. I came tonight because I saw on your agenda that you have 131 Elliott Street back as an agenda item. And my understanding is that you're going to have under consideration some kind of a proposal to vacate the prior denial of an application for a special permit, and perhaps reactivate in some way that prior application. I felt it was significant to come and express caution towards the board. Obviously, I don't know yet what the proposal is. I don't rule out the possibility. You know, I know that there are provisions in the law that prohibit essentially the same application for a two-year period. But then there are some provisions that seem to give the board authority to waive that and to allow the same or similar application. I think that for this board, there'll be a need for transparency with regard to any reopening and reconsideration. There's a huge amount of skepticism, I think, certainly in the neighborhood and perhaps around town with regard to that site, that application, the applicant. I think that the intuitive reaction to reopening something that was denied just a little bit short of two years ago is going to feed into that skepticism. You know, it's a complicated site. There's supposedly a piece of land that the title is unclear on. There's a town-owned piece of land. As I understand, reopening this application is going to require not only action of this board, but also of the Board of Selectmen. You know, it may well be that reconsidering the proposal that was made, the application that was denied two years ago, will be the best outcome for the town. And I think that should be the objective, and that nothing should get ruled out strictly on procedural grounds, you know, if the end result is better for the town. But I think you need to take into consideration the level of skepticism. You know, the applicant can apply as of right, as of a date sometime in August. If the purpose of reopening the existing or the prior denial is to avoid a new filing fee, I think that that will divert attention from the merits of the proposal and feed into the skepticism. I think that another issue or another thing that's changed from two years ago is the traffic in the area. And that Steel and Rye has been a huge success. I think that intersection and that area is very different now than it was two years ago. And I don't believe that the traffic issues are resolved with regard to that site. What might have been an acceptable proposal two years ago may not be right now. I know I participated in some discussions, I guess they were a year ago, trying to work out that site. And those discussions were never concluded. The discussions ceased. The applicant stopped coming to the meetings. But things were never resolved. And if that permit is going to be reopened, you know, I think there's still an issue on the table as to the public benefit that's being obtained for waivers of certain floor area ratio requirements in the bylaw. So I guess what I'm urging is caution and transparency. Thank you.
Well, you can stick around because we're going to be discussing this. And we hear what you have to say. You don't have to stick around. You can watch us on TV.
That was my plan, was to watch you, presumably, at most.
To race home and watch us on TV.
Presumably, the most you would do tonight would be to vote on a reopening or not reopening.
We would not reopen it tonight. What we would do is discuss a possible procedure for getting the modified plan that you were involved in developing onto the, onto the hearing process to... So, yeah, it really is getting the modified plan to be considered, as opposed to the 40B plan. People, if they want the 40B plan, they should certainly oppose the modified plan. But I think that, yes.
I was just going to say, while Alex has been involved in some discussions, none of the other members of the board are up to date on this. So I don't see that there'd be any vote that would be taken tonight. We're just hearing about this for the first time.
I mean, I think there's, procedurally, there's issues about what constitutes the board. I mean, if you're reopening or reactivating a prior application, because you have a newly-elected member, and one of your existing members wasn't a member for the purposes of that application.
It would be a modified application. It would be the modified plan that would be heard under the application.
There might well be a question as to, who was eligible to vote on that?
Well, I think that the, my legal view is that the five members of the planning board, given the fact we'd have a de novo hearing, would all be eligible to vote on the modified plan.
I don't know. I've never tried to look into the issue.
That's my, that's my legal view.
Can't comment until I hear more about what's proposed.
All right. So if you don't stick around, make sure you turn your TV on.
I will.
Yes.
Can I speak to the...
Yes.
Mr. ... You talked about skepticism. And you mentioned the fact that some citizens and others tried to resolve this matter at certain meetings, which were essentially private.
Yes.
So government was being conducted in private by people who were not elected to do it. Am I correct?
Not really. I was invited to participate by Senator Joyce.
Were you elected to it, by the people?
No one elected me, no.
Of course not. And there were people who were defeated at the town election that were part of that process, and the town meeting members that were current were not at that process. And I take exception to it, just to let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that's a good start.
Thank you.
So, yes. If you're not going, if you're going to talk about 131 Elliott, why don't you wait?
Oh, no.
What do you mean, oh, no?
Go through all of this? Will you let him speak at Citizens Speak? And I would like to do...
I did. I knew that he wanted to race home and watch us on TV.
And I do, too.
All right.
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. And I think it's a great idea.
Well, good.
Yes. I support your thoughts on the subject. I do believe that Mr. Mullen has raised some good legal questions, which should be answered before putting the neighborhoods and the planning board through this process again. But I, I think that the original plan, I was not completely happy with it. I would love to have had brick facade to try, to tie it in with the rest of the neighborhood. But I think that Steve Conley had a very good opinion when he said that he thought that the Conleys were not treated as well in their application as were the builders of 36 Central Avenue. And he pointed out to me on a walk that the board, this board was requiring a setback of the upper two floors. And 36 Central, it's perfectly even, all the way down, the whole four floors. He used that as an example. I spoke with Jerry Conley recently, not knowing that this was going to be on the, on the agenda. And I said, Jerry, how can you, what are you going to do? Go around and knock on doors and collect the rent? And he said he was going to set up a, an office in the building to collect his rents under the 40B. I'm suggesting, and we all know that the Conleys do watch this program, and I'm suggesting that maybe the Conleys might want to participate in this idea because they will get their money upfront. Those condominiums would sell like hotcakes. There is a great need for housing at that area, and it's certainly right there by the trolley. We would talk about a planned unit development. That's it. In terms of the public spaces, well, I think that Mr. Joyce is talking about bringing out the sidewalk. That would be a public space. I think Mr. Mullen made a good point when he talked about the traffic and the parking, of course. That is still a problem and will continue to be. But since you want to know if the neighborhood would support your idea of reopening this, you know that I was here on behalf of the neighborhood for years. And so, on behalf of the neighborhood, I say, yes. Go for it.
Okay. Good. Who else wants to speak at Citizens Speak? All right. Seeing no one, we'll go on to...
Can I get you under...
Why don't we do Schulman Way? Because I think we've resolved that. Well, we've lost Ms. McCaffrey, but...
Can I get you under administrative items for a second? We need a individual for the capital needs committee from the planning board.
Okay. That sounds like...
Well, the issue here is the committee meets 4:00 PM on Tuesdays, July 14th, August 14th, and September through February every other week. And it doesn't meet from February to July, but maybe once or twice as needed.
Yeah.
Jim, who's the chairman? Who's on the committee?
Amy Dexter, town accountant. Tom Hurley from the Selectmen. Leroy Walker from the school committee. Bill Ritchie from the Consolidated Facilities. Michael Hale is a person-at-large from the community. Chris Uban's a member-at-large from the community.
Okay, and you need a planning board member?
We do. Bernie was that person.
Okay. Shouldn't we wait till we have five people? Because we may get some volunteers.
We can. I just don't want to let it go because that next meeting is July 14th.
Right. I understand that.
Your next meetings will be the 10th and the... 10th and the 24th.
Maybe you could send out an email asking for volunteers. If one pops up, that's great. And if not...
Ask for volunteers.
Yeah.
Okay.
No issues with the 10th and the 24th.
What?
I've been counting on the 10th and the 24th. If you give me any other days...
Why are we meeting next?
10th and the 24th.
Okay, fine.
And you want to do minutes?
We're going to do the minutes a little later.
All right.
We're going to, hopefully, hopefully, we've resolved Schulman Way. You're going to do a deed, and you're going to put in an easement for the town to have a water line. And that's what they agreed to do, and I think that's what they should do.
So we don't have to do anything else administratively on that?
Other than wish them good luck.
That's easy enough to do.
And thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks for coming in.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Two A and Rs. I have a planting plan for 480 Adams Street, a change in the...
What is Mr. Sheffield here for? Which one?
He's going to be here for the Adam Street A and R.
And what's the other A and R?
126 Cliff Road.
I'm not sure that I brought that with me.
It's a good thing I brought mine.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Maybe we can look at, maybe Cliff Road will be less of a problem than Adam Street.
It absolutely will. What you have here is a 58-square-foot section to settle a adverse possession issue. Oh, wait a minute. I didn't realize Mr. Nestor was coming.
What?
Good evening. My name is Attorney Mark Nestor, 45 Middle Street in Gloucester, Massachusetts. I represent Mayor McGeehan. And I can, kind of came into this thing after the fact. Essentially, my client bought the property back in 2008. There was some presumption that the property line was different than what you thought. There's a fence up in the far left-hand corner, which the next-door neighbor, the Bennetts, had always presumed that was their property line. And they had represented to my client, they'd been there about 25 years. And so the fastest way we could figure to resolve it was that we would do an A and R for all of that 58 square feet, create a separate lot, deed them the lot, and reconfigure the new property line. So it's going to be down from approximately 17,000 square feet minus 58 square feet.
So, okay. So they're going to add 58 square feet to lot...
To lot four, which is Burn Street.
To lot four. So that is, that's sort of a strange little parcel you're adding, but it's, you know, that's how it is sometimes to settle these litigations.
It was the easiest way I could see to resolve it.
Everybody's happy?
Everybody's happy.
All right. So then, we will entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval. So we have that motion here. And I think, Mr. Duffy, are we hearing a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's approved. And he will, he will do your Mylar.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for coming in. Okay, Mr. Sheffield, come and tell us about all these non-compliant buildings.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield, and I'm pleased to represent Bob Juvenville of 487 Adams Street at the corner of Hollis. And he bought the adjoining property so that he could increase his parking access for safety purposes to enter and egress from his property. The property next door was approximately 21,000 square feet. And 5,000 is going to be attached to his property at 487. And then he is planning to sell the remaining 15,000 square feet. There's an existing bond there. And there is an existing building. And at least part of those buildings go back probably 150 years. It's a very old section of the town. And this was built on, back, I believe, in 1867. So I'm coming before you tonight so that you can review the plan and make a determination that the subdivision control laws do not apply and authorize the planning director to sign the Mylar.
So 475 is being split into lot one and lot two. Lot two is then going to be attached to 487?
Exactly. Yes.
What's the zoning problem?
The zoning is resident C, as noted on the plan.
We don't have any information on plot H13-1.
I think that's relatively irrelevant.
No, it's on the plan. It's the same owner. So it's got to be a buildable lot.
But it's a separate, it's not subject of this.
Pre-existing. It's a pre-existing.
No, but all the lots on the plan have to be...
But it's not the subject of the request. The subject of the request is 475. And then 475 split into one and two, and then two attached to 487. Plot H13-1 isn't part of this. It's a separate lot.
I don't see how you could, I, I don't see how, when you're getting enough land to solve any area deficiency in plot H13-1, that I think that the law...
It's not connected to that.
It's a separate parcel.
It's not going to be connected to that lot. It's being connected to 487.
I, I see that it is. It doesn't have to be connected to 487. It could be connected to, on plot H13-1 if the owner so, so fit. The question is, is, I mean, when you have enough land to cure a deficiency in adjoining land, saying that, no, 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 I'm going to keep my non-conforming lot whole, you can't do that once you, once you've got additional land.
But if that was, belonged to somebody else, you wouldn't be bringing that up. If that, if that lot belonged to Ms. Jones, the H13-1, it would be just as irrelevant. The only one...
It would be, it would not be the same owner.
Right. But he's wanting, I mean, he made...
If it were Isabel McGowan, for instance, we don't worry. We don't say, if Isabel McGowan's lot were not big enough, we would not say, well, Mr. Juvenville, you've got to give Ms. McGowan a part of your land. But if you own all the land, then you are under an obligation to try and make all your lots conforming. And here, it seems to me that he can do so.
Are you under an obligation to make all your lots conforming?
You are, in fact, under an obligation. But we can ask the town council if you don't believe me.
Well, I think the, the other thing is, he cannot act on the land. For example, if he wanted to sell that land now, it's not a buildable lot. The H13-1. And he would have to conform to the size requirement and add about 2,000 square feet so that it would be 7,500 square feet, if he was going to act on it. But now, it's just a lot that's...
It's got an existing house on it, though.
Has an existing house.
So he could presumably sell the existing house without having to correct the deficiency. We don't require people who have 5,000-square-foot lots to correct the deficiency before they sell the lot.
Unless they can. If they can correct the deficiency, we...
You're saying that they must.
I'm saying they must.
And I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that would be a legal issue that would come up if and when he wanted to sell it.
The subdivision control law says that every lot shown, actually, it's interesting. It says every lot needs to have the requisite amount of frontage. So if we say that plot H13-1 is not a buildable lot, that probably would be adequate. But it's not a buildable lot, and it is in violation of zoning. And if he takes this land that he could use to make this lot conforming away from it, that lot is, that building is subject to demolition, in my humble view.
Okay. If he tries to separate it, that's fine.
And I see that he's got a garage that's going over the lot line. Is that correct? Is that what that's...
Yes, he's got...
That is, that is a single building going over the lot.
That is a, no, that is a single building that exists.
Right. But if the lot line goes through, yeah, okay.
Exists half of my lot.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't two.
Right.
I think that the setbacks, we're going to have to say that the setbacks of the building shown on this plan shown on this plan do not comply with zoning.
I had the setbacks added because they are pre-existing, non-conforming. I believe that you are interested in the...
In accordance with the requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Right, but I believe that what you are interested in is the area and the frontage. And for pre-existing, non-conforming, you are not interested in the fact that this is two feet from the street, that's what it happens to be. But it does have the area requirements, both frontage and area, to meet the bylaw, and I'm talking about 4, 475 Adam Street.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's fine, but it's all land owned by the same person. It's all land owned by the same person. It's, it's one big, commonly-owned piece of land.
Yes.
And you've got a lot with inadequate area shown, with a house on it, and you've got all kinds of setback problems, you've got a garage straddling the lot lines, yes?
Is it actually owned by the same person?
Yes, it is.
Because one says Jubenville, and one says Jubenville Junior. Are those the same person?
I, I believe they are.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, but they, they took it...
It's not a father and son, that's, one owns one and one owns the other.
I, I don't believe so. I don't believe so. But I know that the, the name is, on the deed, is Jubenville Junior.
Okay.
On the, on one of the lots, on the Hollis Street, 9 Hollis Street Lot.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at.
Yeah. But I believe that, um, one does not have to rectify a setback requirement in order to obtain an A and R, as we're talking really only about whether or not the creation of a subdivision, and in this case, it, there's no attempt to create a subdivision, and Lot 2 is shown as not by itself a buildable lot. And that's designated on the plan to make it absolutely clear to anybody who reads it that they couldn't buy that 30-foot stretch and put in a, any kind of a building.
If you continued the property line that splits the garage along Lot 2, so that the top part of Lot 2 goes with, with H-13-1, and the bottom part goes to H-13-7, would that address your concerns, Alex?
It would undoubtedly make, eight, or, looking at it, I think it would make plot H-13-1, given adequate area, 7,500 square feet. That's my, that, that's what it looks like to me.
So would your client potentially be amenable to creating Lot 2A and 2B in order to fix the deficiency on H-13-1?
If we can get it approved tonight, on that basis, give it a conditional approval, and then the planning director...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that. I'm not prepared to do that for myself, but the rest of the board wants to do it, that's fine.
And what would your objection be, Alex?
I want to see the plan. I want, there has to be, I want to make sure that that plan is big, that is big enough, there's adequate area.
So then we would need the actual square footage of H-13-1, which we don't have.
I think so. I'd like to see, I mean, I'd like to see how he wants to address the area situation. Otherwise, we're gonna have to say that plot H-13-1 is not a buildable lot. And then we're gonna have to say that the buildings shown on the plan do not comply with the setbacks specified in the zoning bylaw.
And we have, uh, we have that this is not a determination of compliance of zoning requirements on the bottom already?
We do, yeah. I think, I, I mean, that is a general statement, I think the specific statement that, which I've just outlined, uh, indicates our, our concerns, or the zoning requirements that we don't believe this plan is going to be this way. And if they're, you know, if they don't have to go to the Board of Appeals because they're grandfathered, uh, I mean, it seems if you go to the Board of Appeals and say we're grandfathered, that's the reason that you've got the Board of Appeals to agree. But maybe you don't have to go, I don't, I, I don't remember what the law is. But I do know that plot H-13-1 is just not, it's not big enough. It's not big enough to have a house on it, and it should be made big enough.
And Bob, you don't know offhand what the square footage of that plot is, do you? Of that parcel?
3,910.
3,910.
Pretty small.
Get another 3,590.
Yeah, I don't think carrying that line across is gonna give you that much.
Well...
You'd have to drop it down a lot.
So the, the alternative would be to say, "Plot H-13-1 is not a buildable lot." And that, we would alert the building inspector to that fact, and you would then be required, undoubtedly, by the building inspector to go to the Board of Appeals. And somehow say that even though we had plenty of land to make this a conforming lot, we had better uses for it. Which the building inspector would probably call up town council, and you might have a problem.
Would that work for you?
Yes. And what is the second thing you...
Well, I'm, I'm simply saying that, uh...
What if he did that?
What?
What if he did it this way?
I mean, he could do all...
He could do all kinds of things, that's right, exactly. Then he could do that. I mean, there's no reason he can't get three buildable lots out of that.
I have three, three lots in compliance.
Three area compliant lots and frontage compliant lots. Now that's what he should do, because you've got three buildings, three houses. There are only two houses? One, two, is that a stable?
Oh, this is this.
One, two, three.
But there's no ownership shown on this.
What?
There's no ownership shown for this lot. I don't, does Jubenville own the church, the former medical building?
Yes.
He does.
Yes, he does.
It's not shown on here. I just want to say, if I could...
But you see, it says 475 Adam Street, prepared for Jubenville. I mean, the plan is a 475 Adam Street, which is, and is prepared for Jubenville, so I think we can assume that's...
That's clear.
But you, you could, you could mention that he's the owner.
If we put the square footage on H-13-1, would that...
That would be helpful.
Would that solve the...
If you do, what I just showed you, put the two Z's, give the bottom part two, 487, give the top piece two, number nine, the Z's across. Now you've got 3,590 plus your 3,910, now you have a 7,500 square foot lot for number nine, now you're compliant. 487 is already compliant, and you're still compliant in Lot 1.
And I'm happy to discuss with you, as is Bill.
Okay, why don't I leave and speak to my client, and maybe I'll be able to come back before you adjourn anymore?
The issue is, they have a closing.
What?
So the issue is, you have a closing.
The issue is, we want to sell the adjacent lot, and we want to sell it by next week.
Which is the...
Oh, we want to sell the 475.
Your medical building?
Yes.
Medical building?
The bottom building.
Yep.
Okay, well, see if you can, uh, see if you can make these two lots conforming.
You do realize those lines aren't correct, but Mr. Sheffield, Mr. Hannigan's going to have to redraw the lines.
Yep.
Concept-wise, what you, what you have is where the line...
Okay, well, we'll talk to him and see if they'll, they'll do that, and, uh...
I'll see if I can get back.
Do you need a motion to table there or anything?
Thank you.
Should we just take it? No, it's not gonna be long.
No, 'cause he'll come back.
He'll come back for that street. Okay.
480 Adam Street.
480 Adam Street, amend the planning plan for the traffic island just inside the parking lot. Okay.
I think this may be moot, I think it's already done, isn't it?
No.
But it's been a lot of work this week, you know.
Right, but they, but they didn't cut a, they cut them back some, but they didn't cut them out. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Philip Wood, Nailman Construction, general contractor, doing the renovations at 480 Adam Street.
And I'm Paul Mahoney with Milton East Realty Trust, trustee of 480 Adams.
So what do you want to do? Do you want to do something on the island?
Yeah, the, the planning board approved a site plan, a landscaping plan, I believe it was in late fall, early winter, and it called for one island that's existing, it has rhododendrons and a double birch tree in it to remain. The island was gonna be drastically reduced in size. Now the leaves have come out on trees, and one of, one side of the birch tree is dead. The, if we cut down just the dead tree, what's remaining is, is the leaning side, it's gonna disease and fall over. The size of the island is being reduced by about 60% according to the plan, and I really believe that by the time we cut the rhododendron back 60%, you're gonna have all stick and all bush at the top, and a tree that's fallen over, everything's gonna be very disproportionate. What I would like to be able to do with the board's approval would be to remove the trees. There, there is a, a university that was interested in taking the rhododendrons as, as large size, and then I'd like to plant a new, healthy birch tree and smaller rhododendrons around that, in the new island, so that everything was proportionate, and the birch tree can then grow to its full potential in, you know, in the years to come.
I can actually show it to you if you want.
You've got a plan?
I have the picture, I have the plan too.
How big are the rhododendrons they're gonna put in? How big's the tree?
The, the current tree is probably about 25 feet tall.
Yeah.
I think we probably would end up with something that was around 15 feet as far as the birch tree goes.
You put in a, a split, split stem birch?
I can specifically get that...
I don't know, they, what they want is split stem birch, they just want a birch tree?
Yeah, the split stem will make it weaker, you want a single...
Okay, so you're just, just a birch tree, and how, that would be 15 feet tall?
I'm thinking about 15 feet, if you say, "We're reducing the size of this island so much."
And how big are the rhododendrons?
I would get something as, as large as I could, I don't have a specific size, but I think we probably want to get something that was in the vicinity of 4 feet for planting purposes.
Right now, they're huge, they're, they're 8 to 10 feet right now.
Yeah, once they're out of the ground...
This island is gonna be about 3 feet wide in the front, and about 10 feet wide in the back, so that's gonna be the finished dimension of it.
I, I, you know, I'm just asking because if we, we want something that we can, uh, we can enforce...
It's going to be manageable, right, it's going to be manageable, it's going to create better sightlines, it's going to be able to be pruned a lot easier, it's going to last a lot longer, and if they're new, you can put a guarantee to them that they last X amount of planting years.
Emily is our expert on many matters.
I will say from personal experience, once a rhodi gets overgrown, it's, you know, trimming it back can be...
It's just terrible.
Yes.
It's like deer have been there.
And if somebody's want to get...
Well, that's what I started to do on one side.
Some deer there?
I'll put pink flamingos if that's what you want.
That might be nice.
Actually, at the next, at your next meeting, Curry's going to be in to talk about closing the stone wall on Brushell Road, and they need to have some mature plantings to put behind that stone wall. These plantings could be put right there.
These could be, we could...
They'll be saved, transplanted up there.
All right, well, it sounds to me like you've done a good job.
I want to start off on the right foot.
Who is, uh, in all these people back there, do we have opposition to this?
Rhododendrons will get a lot bigger as they mature, and you'll have the same problem with them again.
And then they could move them out again.
It depends on species.
Yeah, but that'll take 10 to 15 years.
Well, you can keep them trimmed over, I mean, if you keep them trimmed back, starting from a lower one, you won't have a problem.
I don't think that you should trim your rhododendrons, I let them grow and... Okay, yes.
I point out that we have an expert in the, in the room, Mr....
Okay, you mean, our, our court-certified expert isn't good enough? What do you think, Mr. Jackson, you've heard about this?
Any position on the island, is there anything like that? But you can prune rhododendrons to keep them back, and you can choose varieties that don't get as big. There are varieties that stay under 4 feet tall.
And I'd be happy to put something like that in.
All right, well, our, our, our expert will, uh...
I, actually, you know, Pete, if you didn't mind offering up some varieties, that would be great.
I'd be happy to help them pick out some flowers.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Good boy, Pete.
All right, this, uh, but we don't want them to look like, we want a little bit of, of growth there. Okay, uh, Brian?
My only comment would be that I agree, I think you want the growth, but I, let's, let's monitor the sightlines here, just make sure you can still get out safely.
Yeah.
Okay, so we think this is a modi, modification to the site plan?
De minimis.
De minimis, yeah, I agree.
De minimis, an insubstantial modification, but we will have Bill, or maybe we'll have Emily, we'll have Bill and Emily work together writing it up for you. And, uh, so, with that, if you've heard what the proposal is, shall we now vote to authorize their acting on the proposal as...
As discussed?
As discussed?
So moved?
Second. Okay, any discussion? And we're going to have it subject to, you know, at least something in writing, you know, memorializing this discussion, and you just call up Bill and say, "Where's the memorialization?" Or call up Emily and say, "Where's the..." I mean, it, these things sometimes take time, but you know, the squeaky wheel, okay.
Just point of clarification, Bill, do you want me voting on this or not? Is it amendment to an existing...
You can vote on this.
All right, very good, just making sure.
All in favor, we'll see if we need your vote.
I didn't need it anyway.
It's de minimis.
All right, uh, now what, Phil?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
You can either discuss the public discussion on the possible new zoning, or you can go to the master plan update.
What about 131 Elliott?
Both the minutes.
You're looking at the old one.
Okay, we could do the, we could do the minutes.
Or 131 Elliott.
Yeah.
We might as well do the minutes before we forget them, because we do have people who want these minutes.
So we have February 20...
May 15.
May 15.
I have them in order.
Okay, what is the order?
I have May 27.
Yeah, March 27.
March 13.
February 27.
February 27.
The next one I have is March 13.
Yeah.
The next one is March 27.
Yeah.
Today's after my birthday, and then it's May 15.
Okay, let's do the 27.
Can we do them all at once?
Yes, I think...
No.
The 27? Oh, that's right, we... Oh, that's right, we can.
I can do May.
Let's do the 27. Everyone read it? How does it look? Okay?
Move the minutes of February 27.
Okay, seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, March 13.
Move the minutes of March 13.
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, they're approved.
And would you like to move the next one?
What?
I move the, I, I move that we accept the minutes of the, uh, March 27, 2014.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move the minutes for the chairman of May 15.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes are done.
You and I on that one, right?
I was, yes, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, shall we hear from, uh, we'll hear the master plan update later.
Yep.
Because we've got Mr. Corcoran here running the, uh, running the meter, so we might as well, might as well hear from him.
Take your time, take your time.
I'll let you know at the end of the month. Good evening and thank you for having us back. For the record, Ned Corcoran, attorney here in town. I'm with Jack Dolly, who is the principal of Northland Residential, and one of his new assistants, a young man named Hank Yoder, who's a college student interning with Northland. And we've got, we're here to report, I think, on the progress of some recent meetings with members of the Brush Hill Neighborhood Association, and immediate abutters, we've made, we think, some significant progress. We've also put forward for your consideration a draft of a somewhat site-specific form of bylaw, which could be one vehicle through which the property is rezoned. Certainly also willing to entertain a broader approach with a process that would arrive at a special permit process so that the property could be redeveloped. And so either way, we're, we're, we're happy to cooperate as the board deems appropriate. And obviously with the notion that we need something before the Board of Selectmen by early August so that we can be before town meeting in, um, October. We have shared a draft of the bylaw with the abutter group and have received some minor comments, including one regrettable typo, misspelled fence by leaving out the N. But that would be an interesting way to think about buffering properties between. But beyond, beyond that, we think we've made very, very specific, significant and positive progress with the neighbors. We met most recently with them on Monday evening at St. Pius Church. We made a presentation that will show you, it was more of a working session, but we've put the, on PowerPoint, and we've gotten nothing but so far, very positive feedback from the approach. We've got some very minor wordsmithing details on the, on the proposed bylaw itself, and other than that, we think, you know, knock on wood, that things seem to be moving in the right direction. So, um, we've arrived at a site plan that we think accommodates the desire for sufficient amount of density, that arrives at sufficient buffering of the properties on both, all three of the Milton sides with reasonable setbacks. There is one detail I would say we proposed because the neighbors originally requested sixty-foot setbacks from Brush Hill Road. We're actually showing on the plan something closer to seventy feet, but we're, we think that leaving it at sixty may be important because as you get into the more specific site design issues, we might need that ten feet, plus or minus, to accommodate either slightly wider roadway and, and whatnot. So we're thinking sixty, we're showing the neighbors a plan that shows the buildings at seventy and seventy-five, and you'll see that on the plan. But beyond that, we think we have, you know, they're, we're listening, we're responding. We have a plan that also, at this point, saves the rectory building itself, provides two townhouse units. That was obviously of significance to the historical commission. And so we think that the building is, seems to be solid and capable of being saved. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Jack, who can talk specifically about the property, take us through the, um, the PowerPoint and, and then open it up, obviously, for your comment and your feedback. A robust discussion on whether and how the zoning approach is appropriate and what other things, you know, perhaps we should be thinking about.
So thank you and good evening. I guess before I launch into this, any questions or concerns out of the box with what either you might be thinking and Ned has said, or what we've put forth? Or should I, should I launch in?
Well, my thinking is that, uh, basically, uh, some site-specific zoning is going to be, uh, required, whether or not it can be, uh, used for a potential development on the Carberry land. I, I don't think so. I think that it would be, uh, I, I, you know, I, I haven't spent any time with this because I've been waiting for, to see the site plan because I, the site plan is important for my ability to sort of focus on what your, what your language is. But I, I do think that, uh, saving the house is important just because the zoning would require that the house be saved, and there would have to be a house of a certain age on whatever lot it was that, uh, and then it, uh, that would be useful for just making the zoning site specific without creating spot zoning, of course, which we would never do.
Well, we wouldn't create illegal spot zoning. We might zone a spot, but we wouldn't do illegal.
I don't, we, we wouldn't zone this, this spot. We would, we would make sure that, um, yeah, then other appropriate sites would be, but it, it wouldn't be the, the, the grand, the grand scheme that we talked about earlier, just because, uh, I, I want to get a hold of Mr. O'Neill because he is, uh, you know, he's, he's talking the possibility of a C-zone condominium development, but we're not quite sure what he's talking about, or what he's envis- envisioning. And similarly, there are, uh, there's a big piece of land up off, uh, Panadium, uh, which is currently for sale. How many acres are in that built?
Eighteen, nineteen.
How many?
Eighteen point nine.
Eighteen point nine, so it's more than twice the size of this, uh, with a lot more open feeling. So, uh, we're going to try and see if we can address that, but whether, it probably is going to be in a separate article. So those are my initial thoughts.
Okay, well, on the broader scope, I've, I've provided, I'm working in Hamilton presently on a parcel, and, um, so I've, I've been, had my head in that zoning bylaw quite a bit over the last three weeks. And, and there is some similar, I'll call it senior housing slash townhouse style zoning there. I've provided a copy of that to Ned and intern Bill, if you, if you need to, you know, look at a different flavor or a different wrapper. So, um, I'll jump into this. As you know, we've had a number of meetings, both with you and with residents and the Board of Selectmen. The most, the, the two most recent ones have been with, um, the residents. We had one at the beginning of June, which was very productive, and in fact, the residents, and their spokesmen, spokespeople, several folks, Tim Kernan and several of the director butters, presented Ned and I with probably about, I think, eleven to twelve very specific concerns that they would like to see addressed, and, and they did so in, in a good amount of detail, and they range from, uh, you know, how the project is, is experienced, how a change in the use of the property and/or the development of the parcel is experienced as you drive down Brush Hill Road, what their thoughts on architectural design look like, what happened, what happens with the stone wall in the entrance along Brush Hill Road. We, we, they developed and we have adopted with them this concept of a development scheme that evokes sort of an, an evolved estate, an evolution of an estate property from the past to the present, and being respectful of the past and the, in what we propose going forward. Some thoughts about homeownership versus rental, uh, landscaping treatments not only within the property but around the perimeter, bedroom count, height count, uh, lighting, colors. So we had a lot of very constructive feedback back at the beginning of June, and, and as I said the other night, this week, each and every one of those points were, were spot on and, and points that we think leads to the development of a really good development plan. So with that, we have a development plan at present, and Bill, which buttons do I push here to make this thing go forward? Left, right? I guess I'll push one. That doesn't do anything.
Sure, it does aim at the middle.
Oh, that aims at it.
Aim at here, not there.
Oh, okay. Oh, there we go. So, um, the, the parcel, just for those that are in the audience or at home watching that aren't familiar with the St. Pius property, the St. Pius Church had as a separate parcel of land, which is distinctly located around the corner from the actual church at 865 Brush Hill Road. It was formerly used, owned and used by St. Pius Rectory as a, St. Pius Church as a rectory facility. They also had a small carriage house, which they had, ran a daycare out of for years. Northland Residential, my firm, purchased the property from the archdiocese in the parish on 515 of this year, and the parcel is located in what is known as the Residence A zoning district. Specifically, the parcel is, is about eight point six acres, eight point five eight acres in size. It has frontage on two existing roads, a little over four hundred along Brush Hill and twenty-five feet along Cushing Street. The property is bounded, uh, to the left and right as, as you look at it from Brush Hill Road by residents along Dana Road, which would be to the, I guess, northeast to the right, and Cushing Road, which would be probably to the southwest or left as facing the property. And at the rear of the property, the rear of the prop, the rear boundary of the property is actually the City of Boston slash Town of Milton property line, and the direct abutter to the rear is a City of Boston, um, housing project. The, the property is basically level, very little topography up or down, and does not contain any wetlands. And obviously, the frontage along Brush Hill Road is bordered by a very substantial stone wall, so. On the property itself is an existing house that was built somewhere around 1913, 1912. It was, it's historically known as the William Dupree House, Home. The property was originally part of what was, what is known, if you look at your old maps, the Tucker State. A home was built for, I think originally, the Gardner family, and it is called, according to the records, and these seem to contradict, so I'm not the architect in the audience, but in one breath, it says it's a colonial revival architecture, and another breath, it says it's Italian country villa. It is a stuck-go home. It's about six thousand square feet in size, and there is a secondary carriage house, as I said before. So I have a map next if you can go there. So this is probably a little hard to read, but this is what, what I call the existing conditions plan. So the frontage along Brush Hill Road is at the bottom of the plan where my red pointer is, is pointing. Dana Ave, Dana Road?
Dana Ave.
Dana Ave is here to, I guess that is southeast.
Northeast.
Uh, nor, yeah, it's a, whatever direction. City of Boston property line here, Cushing over here. The property has what we refer to as a tail, which is approximately a twenty-five-foot strip of land that runs from this back left corner of the property out to Cushing Road, that most recently has been used by the parish priest to walk over to the church, which is over here. The property is accessed by a main driveway that comes in through a break in the stone wall. It's mostly vegetated. The little dots are existing trees that we defined as character-defining trees and picked up by topography, uh, survey so we could identify and possibly save them. They also give us good landmarks when we're walking in the woods and don't quite know where we are. The main six thousand square foot house is here, and the carriage house is here. Next, please. This, this is what it looks like, this is, there is not a bend in the road. The frontage along Brush Hill Road is, is, is nearly straight as an arrow, but this is a panoramic shot that we tried to give you a sense of, of the existing entry into the property. Maybe a little deceiving. Again, the prior map showed it was, it's pretty straight. So, next slide, please, Bill. This is the William Dupree House. The main part of the structure is really bounded by this leader, gutter leader, uh, over here. There's a, you can't quite see it, but there's a break in the architectural massing at this corner, and it runs across to a corner here, and there's a porch off to the left. This is really what was, what we might refer to today as the service end of the house, the kitchen, coal stove, and some very small, I would say, uh, uh, help bedrooms on the second floor. So this space over here is probably about sixteen, seventeen hundred square feet in size, but overall, not including any finished space on this third floor where these dormers are, is just under six thousand square feet. There is a lovely, if you, if you can slide back two slides, Bill, please. There's a lovely terrace to the rear of the house that's all framed in. You can kind of see the outline of it here, completely overgrown at this point, but back in its day, this was, uh, this is where all the outdoor activity, living took place. Nice porch off this end, and, um... Can we help you?
No.
And a sunroom off the left-hand end. Okay, so we're moving, keep going. Yep. So current zoning, very briefly, resident-owned zoning district, brush you forty thousand square foot minimum lots, a hundred and fifty, I don't know where the one came from, a hundred and fifty feet of lot frontage is a minimum, sorry about that. Zoning setback requirements are thirty, fifteen, and thirty at the front side and rear. As of right zoning, I have a seven-lot subdivision with a five-hundred-long cul-de-sac. I actually think we possibly could get an eighth lot, but we, we haven't pushed it mathematically. The land area supports eight area, lots of area. It's really a frontage geometry issue, and, and the picture of that seven-lot subdivision is next. Pretty pedestrian, um, you know, this is the ugly plan, um, you know, with, I think that's about four hundred and fifty feet of cul-de-sac road at fifty-foot right-of-way. I think the road width here is twenty-two, or is that, that might be a different town off in my head. But these all, these, each of these lots at a minimum meets the, the one fifty, forty thousand square foot dimensional requirements. Again, you'd have Dana Road up here, Cushing Homes over here, you know, in a rather, you know, narrow setbacks, so.
We measure in a straight line, not around.
We measure in a straight line, not around the curve, so.
Okay. Good to know, thank you. Next, if you don't mind, Bill. So we have cut, in, as a result of many, many conversations, whether they be with the Board of Selectmen, on our own, with the planning board here, with Planner, and numerous conversations with town, neighbor, neighbors, we've come up with what we believe is acceptable to most of the parties, if not all. I don't want to, I don't want to get ahead of my skis, but we seem to have come up with a development plan that has these ingredients, and then we have a picture of this. The development program calls for thirty-six age-targeted-by-design townhomes to be developed on the property. They would be two-to-three-bedroom units, each with a first-floor master bedroom. They'd be of approximate size of seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet on the small side to twenty-four on the large side. It is envisioned that each new unit would have a two-car garage attached to it. We have also made the determination that it is appropriate and feasible to retain and rehabilitate the existing historic structure into two, possibly three, units, but no more than thirty-six. We are envisioning that we might diminish the overall size of the existing structure by taking off what we referred to as the service wing. If you recall the image that I had, that sort of subordinate piece of the structure that was off to the right. Affordable Housing, it says ten percent, twenty percent. It was meant to say ten percent. Sorry about that. So we, we've, we've been, the conversation around affordable housing would be, was at a ten percent level, of three to four units. We've had some conversation about the notion of possibly making a financial contribution toward affordable housing, either in addition, as part of this affordable housing requirement in lieu of, but we haven't settled on any of that. We just, all I'm saying is, is that the conversation thus far has been framed around a ten percent affordable housing figure. So ten percent of thirty-six is three point six, so I rounded down to three. I think the custom is to round up to four. Understood. So moving to setbacks along the perimeter of the property. The feedback we got on, in early June was a front, a minimum, no less than sixty-foot front setback along Brushhill Road, no less than thirty-five along the two sides, Cushing and Dana, and thirty at the rear. Building massing, we talked a lot with the residents about building massing. We don't want to have large structures that tower over adjacent homes. We're looking for structures that fit into the neighborhood or compatible with the existing structure, which is frankly, probably bigger than most of the homes in the neighborhood, but is harmonious with the architecture, both in massing and style. So we're, our homes are contemplated to essentially be a story and a half. Maximum height can be somewhere in the thirty to thirty-five foot range easily. That we utilize the existing opening in the stone wall along Brushhill Road as a single point of access. And we have had conversations with the fire department about the need for secondary access, and the subsequent plan, being a looped plan, has met with the fire department's satisfaction that a second means of egress is not necessarily needed. I think the residents would prefer not to see a secondary means of access, either out onto Brushhill Road or forced out through Cushing, the Cushing Road tail, as I speak, as I call it. So, so how do we, Bill, one more slide. Oh, I did it. So here's the plan, excuse me. This is the proposed development plan. Again, brush, a little different orientation, Brushhill Road off to the right here. This is the main entrance and the main break in the wall. It's hard to see, for you to see all the lines on this plan, but you're going to see a series of dashed lines along the edges. The first one is thirty feet, the second one is forty-five, and the third one is seventy. The seventy-one is approximately where you'll see the coloration change from light green to dark green. So the buildings are seventy-five feet at its closest point, which would be that point.
Seventy there.
So, excuse me, seventy, seventy feet at that point right there, and about seventy-five feet here from Brushhill Road. Likewise, along the perimeter, there's a thirty and a forty-five-foot dash line through here. We're proposing a thirty-foot setback, but if you actually look at our buildings, I think the closest we are to the line might be...
It's, um...
Right here. Right there.
Yeah, it's thirty, it was thirty...
That's forty-five, that dash line's forty-five.
So you're like thirty to thirty-five on the Cushing roadside.
Yep.
And I think it's closer to forty-five on the Dana Avenue side.
So we're a little closer along Cushing than we are along Dana, although we're calling for a consistent line. One of the things that we tried to do was to not stack up homes along the sides in a soldier-like manner. We tried to have a little bit of undulation and twists and turns to not only the roadway but the resulting buildings, so that the residents didn't feel like they were looking at a wall of architecture anywhere. And you'd see we did the same thing along the rear. The retained William Dupree House is here. You'll see that this end of the building, the building is looking a little shorter because I took that service wing off in order to force, put some sort of garage and/or surface parking here. We haven't resolved that. But the primary face of the building is what is the most valuable, as is the rear. So we wanted, needed a place, we didn't want to park cars right in front of it or right behind it. So we, we were talking about saving the building, rehabilitating it, basically splitting it in half and creating two townhouses with a first floor and a second floor living area, and then dealing with parking and/or garages off to this side. These are three-unit townhouse structures. That's a two. We have some, tried to create some green space. There is a grove of white pines on the property right in here. There's a substantial red, red beech, a beech tree right here. That's one of the things we'd see, like to see if we could work around. We've deliberately sort of twisted and turned the homes along the back boundary to, you know, minimize the attachment emotionally and otherwise to the housing project to the rear. The site is envisioned to be serviced by town water and town sewer. Their existing conditions plan, you might not, I didn't point it out, there's a drain line that parallels this property line, and then clips this corner here and runs into the housing site in the City of Boston presently. That is in place. It could very well need to be cleaned out.
The town actually owns an easement from Brushhill back to the city property line that was acquired in nineteen fifties.
How wide, Ned?
What's that?
How wide?
Ten feet.
Those are drainage purposes? So, let's see. This is a prospective view of the project entry. This is, this is the project entry. One of the things we did was, there's a lot of dead wood and invasive species in the existing vegetation along Brushhill Road. So this has taken some artistic liberty to pluck some of that out, retain what we would think would be vegetation worth retaining it, augmenting it with new vegetation, creating a manicured, a buffer, manicured and maintainable buffer, not a wild buffer, along all of the perimeters. And this is of trying to view into the property through the throat in the wall to where the road then starts to bend left and right to create its loop. And the, and the building that you see in the horizon or in the distance is, is the first building right here. You're looking at the side of this. One of the comments that the, came out of our resident meetings was that as the homes are viewable from Brushhill Road, they didn't want to look at the back end or garages. They didn't want to look at, they wanted it to look as if it was an existing home that had been built, you know, in sequence along Brushhill Road, so it had a front door kind of feel to it. So as we drove up and down Brushhill Road, much of the architecture evokes some form of front porch detail, where back in the day you would envision sitting out there and having, you know, a cup of tea or a glass of lemonade or something. So you'll see in subsequent, let's see if I can find, you know, this is, you know, again, a bit of a cartoon, but this is to try to create some sense of what does that mean? This is a, you know, the front elevation of the house, gable, garage is tucked around at the side, so you don't see garage doors from Brushhill Road. You know, some traditional form and shape and materials. We actually are talling for stucco down below here, and some clavoured and/or shingles above. And we have some sort of overhung front porch detail. You know, mind you, we haven't, you know, haven't gotten very far down the pike with the architecture, but this is the, this is the sense that we got from the residents, and this is our attempt to try to respond to some of that. These are just different images. This is, this is the same unit. This is meant to be sort of the front street face, and then this is the same unit as if you were entering around the side into the garage. And that, the front door is here, which again, is this, this porch here. So that's, that is some of the, some of the architectural ideas that came out of our meetings with the residents, and we responded to them with earlier this week. Back to the Dupree House. Again, this is the big building. You know, this, this shows the entire building. What we're really talking about is losing this section here and trying to integrate some sort of architecturally compatible in form, shape, and style, parking garage off to this side, probably would have a similar hip roof kind of, low slung kind of roof, same materials. The house is in pretty good shape. We did a structural review of it today, and it is frankly solid. It's very solid. Doesn't mean it's not, it's going to be, you know, inexpensive to renovate, but it looks quite solid. You know, it needs all new windows, it needs a new roof, it needs new systems, but it's effectively dry. So these are, you know, I won't go into a lot of these. These were attempts, cross-section attempts to share with you and this, and the, and the residents to understand, you know, sort of setback distances here from, you know, Dana Ave to the Franklin House, through a buffer rear yard, their rear yard to the property line, some buffer zones, to the actual structure. And we did likewise here along Brushhill Road, and there's actually two sections, one that is to the right of the entrance, and a second, which is to the left of the entrance because the houses are at different distances away from Brushhill Road. And then I believe, well, we had one off of Cushing, I guess I didn't bring it. Last comment that came up in our conversations was along the buffers. We talk a lot about buffers when we do planning, and we require them as part of either zoning or site-specific plan, and they end up being these no-man land zones, where no one owns them, no one maintains them, and they kind of just turn into wildness. And there was a strong sentiment expressed, which we frankly love to hear, that that's not what we wanted to have happen. We wanted thick vegetative buffers that were maintainable. I use the word manicured. I don't mean manicured in the sense that it's, you know, like, I don't know, Augusta, but it would, that they are a buffer that you would feel comfortable walking into, as opposed to those that are going wild and then you're nearly not comfortable going into. And we did a lot of this up at our project in Belmont, and these images were taken there earlier this week to try to demonstrate how you can do it, where you have, there we go, where you have, you know, edge of road, you have some form of grass strip that is not a token grass strip. It's big enough for, to be mowed, you know? What is that? That's forty-two, you know, everyone who mows grass, they don't mow them with a twenty-four-inch mower anymore. They have these ginormous things. So, you know, you have three, four, five, six feet of grass with an undulating edge, so it creates some character, into a planting bed, and then you have a transition of low vegetation, seasonal color, thicker, taller, and it goes back to a storied, an existing story. This, all of these pictures happen to be along the edge. Our property is in here, and in Belmont, on the other side of all of this is a hundred and one acre parcel of open space owned by Audubon that is a major, what did you call it? Urban forest? Urban, urban?
Yeah.
Wilderness.
Urban wilderness.
Urban wilderness. So in Belmont, even though we're right in the middle of the city, or in Milton, we're right in the middle of the city, we like to have this sense of some wilderness or some forested land. And the big concern when we did this is that if you were out on the wilderness, in the wilderness, you didn't want to see the houses. You didn't want to see lights, you didn't want to see cars. So how could you create a buffer that, that spoke to that and that didn't just turn into bittersweet and poison ivy and bush bramble? So we have a good deal of experience in that, and although the plan just says a buffer, the special permitting process or the zoning bylaw that we might be able to draft site specifically or broadly, can certainly talk about how to create these environments where they're inviting, they're an asset to the community, that they have some well-maintained. A good example is further up Brushhill Road at the Low Estate. The front entrance looks good. You go about one house, and then there's this probably about a twenty-five to thirty-foot zone, which is kind of nothing. And in one of them, there's a big fence, and you look at the back side of an ugly fence, and it doesn't need to be that way. It could have been, could have been maintained in a, in a way where it's an asset to passenger along the way, as well as a resident within the community. So I guess in short, this is the journey that we've been on over the last eight weeks, ten weeks, with some intensity with you guys and the residents over the last six weeks. And the plan and the development program that we've settled on is this. And we are, we're looking, you know, why are we here tonight? We're looking for input on our, on the work done today, and frankly, the planning board's support for considering a residential use of this type, you know, this, this nature on, on this property.
And on top of that, if, certainly if the planning board is willing to support it, then obviously, time is short to engineer a bylaw that is capable of being presented to an October town meeting, assuming that there are two or three more planning board meetings between now and the delivery of a bylaw to...
Tenth and twenty-fourth, so that would be two. But there could be more than that.
And certainly, there would be a public hearing on the bylaw that would be conducted by the planning board, and there could be further tweaks and revisions and as necessary to the bylaw before it's finally presented to town meeting. But we need something that's of substance to be working with, and that's why I took it upon myself, with Jack's direction, to draft, at least begin a draft around this site plan, is what we proposed, so.
It's always good to have, to have a draft, and you, you might provide a copy of the Belmont zoning, that if it's useful.
I can do that.
And you can show us, you're going to give us copies of your PowerPoint. And you can show us, you're going to give us copies of your PowerPoint.
I can do that. You want a paper or electronic or both?
I prefer paper.
Bill, you could, if you want, you could save it directly to your own computer now, and then we can, we can provide paper copies as well.
That would be good.
I tried to email it to you today, Bill, but it bounced.
It was a little large.
And I, and I, and before, one last comment. I want to publicly acknowledge the level of cooperation and really good working environment that was created by the Brush Hill Neighborhood Association, the director butters, more broadly, the Neighborhood Association. They, they met independently. They came up with the list of issues and concerns, all of which are things that, as Jack said, would be important considerations for good zoning, good plan in any respect. They seem to have accepted a level of density that is here, as long as the level of density is properly buffered and managed. And the feedback from Monday evening, and I know that Tim Kernan's here, and I won't speak specifically, but the feedback was very, very positive. And so, I really appreciate, these are not easy issues to ever think about when you're dealing with the butters and introducing, you know, new concepts and new densities, but the level of engagement, the positive nature of the engagement has really been spectacular. And I want to acknowledge the neighbors and the butters for their willingness to work with us.
Yeah.
Ned, early in the presentation, you said that it's age-targeted, something like that? Meaning what, elderly?
No, it's, it's, the notion is that it's not age-restricted, but the notion is that the units are designed so that, as you kind of get just beyond where I am in my life with kids that moved out, you might be thinking of downsizing. And, you know, so if you're 55 to 75, and you don't want to climb stairs all the time, you know, the master bedroom on the first floor creates a level of living convenience. It's targeted for, because of that, you, you end up with very few to no children.
That's my, that's what I'm getting at.
And that's the issue. It's that it's really, they're high-end townhomes, it's condominium. The zoning draft has specific restrictions on rental that came out of conversations with the neighbors, so that the minimum length of any rental would be 18 months, and you couldn't rent more than 10% of the units at any one time. They're really intended to be owned. The other thing about it is that because of the target market, that they're likely, although there's 36 units, it's unlikely that more than 25%, or 3/3 of them would be really occupied at any one time. Very likely that there'll be periods of time when good parts of the population will be in Florida and the Cape or other places. And so, and that was something that Rick Franklin, who lives on the corner of Dana, said to me. He said, "I get this age-targeted, and I'm not worried about as much about the unit count, because I know that it's not going to be fully occupied all the time." It's going to be occupied all the time. It won't be fully occupied all the time, and so the traffic volumes won't be as significant. We'll feel like there's life next door, but it won't be overwhelming life. And there won't be children here, because it's really going to be for that next, that sort of the next stage of, of age, which is, you know, I'm selling my house, I'm downsizing, I want to, I want to own, and I want to stay in Milton, and I'm going to, you know, I'm going to have a bedroom upstairs, and maybe a den where I can do some work. And the, and the, and the bedroom upstairs will be for my kids and my grandchildren when they come to visit me, but they're not going to live with me full-time.
You know, you're getting to my concern about the grandchildren visiting and so forth. There's no open space, I don't see any restricted open space here for swings or anything, any...
The idea is that you would not have that type of amenity, because that type of amenity would encourage families with young children. There is a lot of open space, and we haven't yet drilled into specific elements of what the open space would look like, but I don't think, you know, if you're buying, in your experience, if you're, someone's buying these units, they don't want the swing set with the kids, with the, with the bicycles around. They want, it's okay to come visit, but you're not there full-time.
We, we get, I mean, I do a lot of this. We get no requests for that kind of stuff. The requests we get are for gardens, and we have a tomato garden. And everyone seems like it's easy. Some people's tomatoes' gardens are kept like, you know, like Augusta. Some people's tomato gardens aren't kept very well and are a visual nuisance to others, so it's a, there's a balance act there, but usually that's what we're, we see. The grandkids are coming, they're coming for holidays, they're coming for birthdays, anniversaries. They might be there a couple of nights at the most. You know, when we say no kids, the most likely kid that you'll have is you'll have a, you know, let's say you have a family of two or three, and two of them are off at college. One's through college, one's in college, and one's about to go there. You might have one of those, so they're in their junior or senior year. Or they're a private school kid who comes home for something. And then you get rebounds, college kids that come back and are looking to go, you know, in that, that first couple of years are trying to get, where are they going? And I don't know about you, but the last place I wanted to be home when I was that age was home, but I needed a bed to sleep in. Thank you.
On the subject of gardens and open space, how much of the space next to each unit is private for them to use, and how much is essentially owned by the condos and maintained presumably by the condo association?
Short answer is little and most. So, a traditional condominium regime setup would create what they, what are called in the condo world, exclusive use areas. Those are areas that are designated for the exclusive use of a particular unit. They traditionally are the driveway, the area, and immediately in front of the garage. And the footprint, so if this is the footprint of the house, a mirroring of the footprint of the house out 25%, so let's just say this is 10 feet, so 25% would be two and a half feet that would parallel that zone. And that exclusive use encompasses not only any patio or deck that might be there, but any ground surface, so that if you wanted to do some personal planting or something like that, you can do that. And that, that's a general rule. I mean, there may be circumstances, geometry, and trees, and so on and so forth, that, that shift that around. But that's, I mean, having done probably, I don't know, 1,500 condominiums, that's, that's the formula that we've used, and it seems to work the best.
So, the people living in these units are not going to be setting up fences to, okay. So, the open space that you see is going to be essentially kept open, at least as far as views go?
Right. You raise an interesting question or point. A question was raised as to whether we were going to, I'll say, stockade fence the two sidelines. And we, and the general sense is not to do that, not wall it in. On the Dana Road, Dana Ave side, there's an existing stone wall that essentially defines the property line. So, and there's nothing on the Cushing Road. It just flows, there's no, there's nothing. So, the thought was to create a stone wall to, again, mimic this evolved estate concept. You have one on the front, you have one to the, whatever side that is, to mimic that on the, on the other side, so that it created a sense of boundary emotionally, visibly, without creating a...
Without creating an eight-foot wall that you then have to, then you now have to treat, because you don't want to see the wall.
Right.
Now, I will say, and then I should say at some point, and I'd rather say it now, is that I do envision putting up some form of solid fence along the rear property line, or I would like to. There is an existing stone, chain link fence there presently. For my selfish benefit of trying to create an environment for the units, I think it would be best if I had a solid fence and then augment it with vegetation along that rear property line. That's what I've envisioned. We haven't spoken about that out loud with anybody. I, we just, to be honest with you, we hadn't really gotten there. And most of our conversations, in fact, all of our conversations with the neighbors have been on the three other sides.
One other thing we haven't detailed it yet on the site plan is parking. You know, the draft of the bylaw says one and a half spaces for each unit, which may be provided within garages. You know, there's actually two, the two-car garages, I think, for each unit, plus additional parking space available outside of the garage. But there need to be a handful of sort of visitor parking pods. And we're thinking no more than three spaces per pod, so that they're, they're easily hidden and landscaped, but can be easily found and are easily located. And that would be connected with nice walking paths, so that you can get to and from. But, you know, there will be the periodic need for that type of parking. So, we haven't yet located them on the site. And what materials would you use, the structure, that's a, that's a set of details that we haven't, that haven't gotten into yet, but it's certainly something that we need to pay attention to.
I guess one last detail, I don't want to run this. Lighting was a very important concern over everyone, and lighting becoming an offensive nuisance to a budding property. And, you know, from, we don't really want the entrance to feel and look like, you know, the entrance to Trump Tower or something, you know, or Disney World. Sort of an estate, subtle, clean, crisp, inviting, safe, but not garish, if you will. So, you know, night sky compliant lighting, low level, no spotlights, no floodlights on units, things like that. And, and, you know, some of the, the other bylaw language that we've circulated thus far starts to talk about that, if you want to, you know, see language and adapt it. Belmont has it, Hamilton has it. I don't think Dover spoke to lighting, but those are all...
And you'll need some sort of lighting for the entryway. Would you recess that softly into the stone walls on either side of the stone wall? You know, do you have to have something that's higher as you're coming in? That's a detail. You know, you do, modern building codes do require lighting at each entrance, entryway of a dwelling, but that can be recessed into an eaved overhang, so that it points down, doesn't point out, doesn't point into somebody's bedroom. And that's, that's an important consideration for, you know, the buyers within the units, as it is with property owners on the outside. So, the careful thought needs to, will need to go into that. But we're focused, obviously, on achieving that level of dark sky compliant type of...
All right. Now, Brian.
Just, I think it's a great project, looks, looks very nice. I think I am a very close buy-abutter to this, and I, it's nice to hear that the neighborhood process has gone well and that there's been so many, so much, such a cooperative effort. I am not, right now, of the same opinion at the moment as our chair, that, you know, that we need to go site-specific here. I would love to challenge this board to try in the next 30 to 45 days, to try to use this as an opportunity to put some more general zoning together that might accommodate this at this site as well as elsewhere, and use the site-specific as a fallback position for this particular project. I'd be happy to be part of that subcommittee to present something at one of the next two meetings. And I do have some comments on the general bylaw, but I will hold those for now, because I think generally it's, it's a good first effort.
We've talked on the master plan committee and in the joint meetings that we've been having about the importance of creating a varied housing stock in Milton, and that seems to be something that's of general agreement. We've also talked about the different parcels that have come in front of us recently, and is there a way to write a zoning bylaw for all of them? It appears that some of them are very different from others, and we've mentioned that. But if there is a way that we can write one zoning bylaw to cover some of those situations, it's worth a try. As you say, we may have to fall back to the site-specific, but I think it's worth a try to look at that, and then recognize that some of the other parcels that we've looked at may need a different approach.
Right.
And that could be, actually, the process of going through to see if this could fit other situations is a good way of helping us define what would have to be written differently for the ones that don't fall within this.
I think what's also quite compelling from this specific presentation and what we've heard tonight so far is that the community process and neighborhood input is clearly working here to help the developer define the process and guide the planning board in figuring out what the requirements should be for putting the guidelines, putting the restrictions or the, or the specific provisions into the special permit. So, so clearly, it seems that this project would indicate, at least in this case, that there would be an opportunity for a general bylaw to then be able to be properly used to craft a site-specific special permit that the neighborhood would be comfortable with, and the planning board could hopefully endorse.
And that's one consideration in looking at this with only two of our meetings left to go, possibly a third if we can squeeze it in, is, is it something where we go with what we have for the site-specific and amend it later to cover another site if we can't get to something broader, rather than let all the effort go to waste of working with the neighbors for coming up with what's been coming, what's been presented so far?
I do not want to not support this project. I think it's a very good proposal. I think it certainly has had a lot of investment from both the developer and the neighborhood. And I think that it's, it shows well on, at least up on the screen here. But I really do challenge us to at least make an effort over the next month to try to get something that would work, and, you know, perhaps we, we approach town meeting with, with two options here, so that we don't have to have this project at risk if the broader scheme doesn't go through.
Right. Yeah, it could definitely be one way of looking at it. You don't want to put this at risk. I think I heard him volunteer to work on this.
I did.
He did volunteer. The way I usually write the zoning is I'd go down to Wareham and write it on the dining room table.
I'll go up to New Hampshire, so I don't need Wareham.
You're going to be in New Hampshire, so that, that makes it a little tricky. My view is...
I'll go wherever it need to go, actually.
My view is that, I think it would be too bad if we did the, said, trust your planning board. We can have condos where the planning board decides it lies. And the planning board, after all, are wonderful elected people with good judgment and good taste, and they can be trusted to do the right thing. I think that putting zoning to the town meeting on that basis is likely to result in not securing a two-thirds vote. I would be sorry to see this development go by the boards and have a 40B here, which is, in fact, the alternative. This developer has done 40Bs, knows how to do them. He would prefer to work with the board to come up with something for this particular site. And Brian, don't get me wrong. If we could do something as likely to secure a town meeting approval as site-specific zoning, I would be thrilled. But if we, you know, do something loose, and the town meeting says, you know, what are you doing? We don't, we don't think that you are actually going to be our saviors. We want something in the zoning that protects us. I think that these neighbors want something in the zoning... I think that these neighbors want something in the zoning that will require what you've seen, the actual site plan, that they can be reasonably certain that what their zoning is what they're going to get. And if you make it loose and say this applies anywhere in town, I think that you're going to, I think that we're going to have all kinds of people coming in with all kinds of projects. We won't have the standards that we need to make thoughtful decisions. And I think that the town meeting will say, you know, you've got to rethink this.
But I don't think there's any harm in having a look between now and July tenth to see what could possibly be done.
I've been thinking about this for months.
But we haven't.
I understand.
You have the rest of the board a chance to.
You should have been, and I have, I have begged the master plan committee to get involved in this. I have gone to the master plan meetings.
Alex, we just got this this week. There is no way that we could have come up with this, with alternatives to this.
I haven't even read this.
That's what we're, but what we're talking about is this right now. Can this particular zoning be modified?
About the methodology we should pursue in zoning this project.
Yeah, I think we're also having a larger conversation about the methodology of how we're going to zone Milton. And I don't, at some point along the way here, we have to decide as a town if we're going to continue to zone every project site specific or if we're going to make an attempt to get town meeting to change the process.
Who is going to decide that, Brian?
Town meeting is going to decide.
Well, initially, it would be the planning board deciding to, whether or not they take it to town meeting.
I don't know that anyone has actually campaigned, except for you, Brian.
You're right.
Actually has. I campaigned, fight over development of save Milton's open space. But that was twenty-five years ago that I, I came up with that, that particular slogan.
It seems to have worked for you.
And, you know, I, I haven't seen any, any particular reason to change it. But, you know, time is short.
Except for me sitting here.
Time is short. I have, I have actually put a fair amount of work into trying to figure out if I personally think that we could do some big zoning. And I'm afraid that I've come to the conclusion that we can't.
I'm not sure the rest of us are at the point where we could agree or disagree with you on that, Alex.
I am, I am happy to work with this developer doing site specific zoning, which will not be spot zoning. And there is no reason at the same time we can't consider, you know, something bigger. But I, as I see it, the Carberry land, this particular zoning will be very helpful for the Carberry land once this is done, because it will, it will have the sort of constraints in it that the neighbors want.
So are you suggesting that this zoning could be modified before going to town meeting to apply to the Carberry? Or that it would potentially go to town meeting, more or less as is, and then modified for Carberry?
If we can get some, if we can get something in place for this particular developer. I don't want to take, run the risk of having a 40B go up because somehow we've come up with zoning that doesn't work everywhere. I mean, we try and come up with the one size fits all zoning and it doesn't work and it gets shot down. Don't want that to happen.
I would argue that there's a strategy, you can do both here, and I think we've seen it at town meeting. I think we saw it in this past version of town meeting where we had two proposals put forward. One was a general proposal, and I apologize, I can't remember what it was right now.
It was the landscape zoning?
I don't, is that what it was? You know, there was a specific revision of the general.
The first zoning came out and it was vetted and.
It was actually Mr. Corcoran's proposal.
Extremely well-written, by the way.
It was Mr. Corcoran's proposal, actually.
And then, and then there was another one written, but we can't do it that way again.
Why can't we do it that way?
Because that one required a special town meeting.
May I, may I make a comment on that? Because I, I think the notion of trying to do something that is broader, I think it is worth taking a stab. I think that, it strikes me that the coming town meeting will really be focused on zoning. You're certainly not going to be at the point where the master plan committee is ready to present much for their approval, I don't think. But there's going to be a general set of discussions around zoning. I think you'll get a good sense of town meeting in that process. I think it is possible to try and arrive perhaps at something like what they do in Dover, which is a fairly general bylaw with a second bite for town meeting at the site specific approval, which I think in this case could work if there was a general bylaw within a presentation with the follow-on article being this bylaw, that this would be the site plan. And if town meeting said, yes, we like that site plan, you can go forward and grant and move into the special permit process. That would, that, you know, the, the critical element, obviously, is how much work we've done with the neighborhood and the buy-in that we've gotten from the neighborhood. You're not going to get that whether you're rezoning a site or seeking a special permit if the neighborhood comes out in opposition. I mean, I don't see you as elected members of town, of the, of the planning board granting a special permit if there's substantial opposition. There's always the risk that it's a special permit, therefore you are allowed to do something if you establish that you meet the specific parameters, but it's a pretty high bar to get to. So perhaps something, stab at something that's general with a broad discussion at town meeting about the approach to getting to general with a fallback of site specific that we vetted, that we agree is appropriate and would work. And maybe some hybrid of that that says, okay, you passed the general, here's the site plan process in the general, and we apply for that in the follow-on article. And town meeting says, yes, we like that. That's what we would have approved on a site specific zoning perspective. You may go forward and you may, you get your site designation from town meeting and you may go forward and seek your special permits. I mean, that's a, that is an approach that's taken in other communities. Maybe it could work. I think it's certainly worth discussion here and public, the public hearings on the zoning as you get into September and then, you know, what, what may come of town meeting. I also would want to make sure that something like the site specific bylaw was there to be approved if.
If the others do.
There was a failure on the other side. But I don't know what else is coming before town meeting this fall but for some zoning things.
I think it's also, the master plan committee will have two articles, one of which will be a general bylaw rather than zoning. But as far as I know, everything else is going to be zoning.
So I think it's, it is, it is going to be a town meeting that's going to be ripe for a lot of this discussion and you're going to get, you're going to have a lot of seasoned heads weighing in on pluses and minuses of different approaches. And I think there's an opportunity to try and arrive at something if collectively we take, you know, we take the time to do it. And I, and I would encourage the board to do it. I'd be happy to participate in that effort. Jax, we've provided some examples of bylaws, you know, Hamilton, Dover, some that seem to work in other places. Maybe they wouldn't work here, but maybe they could be adapted.
I think there's enough time to talk about it between now and the time we have to submit something with the understanding that the one article that would definitely be submitted is your site specific one with whatever modifications we decide. And that way, that project is not at risk. But we have enough time to consider other options between now and the time we have to submit the articles, if we're efficient about it.
And, and part of the reason, I mean, maybe it's not in my economic best interest to get there, but the notion of zoning the site introduces an amount of time and effort and uncertainty that is good for me, but it's not necessarily good for my clients. And it is, and it, it is, it adds difficulty to how you, at, at what you see as the path to getting to yes on an approach. Certainly in every case, you need to work very closely with the butlers and with neighbors, with the planning board, with others. You need to generate that support, any specific development. But you ought not to have to figure that, okay, I gotta, gotta have an article in place by the end of December so, you know, get to the May town meeting. If we miss that one, I've got to wait till October. You're, you're looking at long horizons when you talk about rezoning sites on a specific basis. You look at the, the horse farm with the assisted living. I mean, that may go away because the agreement lapsed. That's in litigation. But, you know, we spent, you spent an enormous amount of time working on zoning that was very specific. They didn't have counsel representing them when they showed up at town meeting. The first motion on the floor that night was to make it more gentle because it was too specific. It was, that was a majority vote, up or down. It was a quick discussion. They voted, they voted in favor of the motion. All of a sudden, the bylaw was gone. And the, and the development team that had spent thousands of dollars and months of time negotiating good faith with Alex and the board on a bylaw was left to say, now what do we do? And that was October, because that was the same town meeting where the, where the culture landscaping was approved. They had to wait till following May for an opportunity to come back to town meeting with a bylaw that was substantially the same, but we had more pretty pictures and we had an affirmation, reaffirmation that the butlers were in favor. And so it passed. It passed overwhelmingly with a couple of minor little discussions on some things, but it passed overwhelmingly. But by the time it passed, they were at risk that the project was going to go away because they were trying to renegotiate their, the deal to keep the contract in place.
And if we're looking at something like the Carberry estate, it would make a difference to a buyer if the zoning was already in place that would allow them to do something more creative rather than them buying it hoping that we can pass zoning that might make a development that was more palatable to the town.
I worry that, based on what Mr. Corcoran just said, I worry that you won't get two-thirds to, to approve a specific amendment. You, you may hear from people in, in town meeting who say, these are too specific and we want more general bylaws passed. That's what we're hearing, that's what we are hearing in the master plan committee meetings. We are hearing people say that the zoning needs to be relaxed. Now, that's obviously only a small percentage of the population that's participating in these meetings, and they may be the more progressive part of the community that's participating in the meetings. But I think it's a risk that you, you may have the same challenge to get the two-thirds vote for a specific bylaw.
Well, I, I guess I would like to, you know, I, I feel like we can kind of go into figure eight here for a while. I'd like to, like to say, you know, can we give it a chance to look, you know, broad and narrow over the next thirty days, whatever that is?
Look at both.
And, 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 you know, we'll put our shoulder into it, whether it be drafting from whole cloth or providing some other experiential documents that, that will allow folks to think, okay, does this work or not? What are its pitfalls? What, what might be the pitfalls or not? And, you know, I, I don't know what the right answer is. I, I would like to think that the investment that I've made to, to get to where I hope I am has, was a good one and not, I wasn't just on a fool's errand. But that's, you know, this is the business I'm in. I recognize that and that's the risk I take. So I think we have the, we, we have the bones of some good ideas here. What, what document do they go into and what do we think? How do we assess the odds of success for October or November, whatever date town meeting is?
October, end of October.
It's October twenty-fifth for sake of, you know, so, you know, because I think everyone wants to achieve something, so we're going to be weighing odds.
One way of looking at it, because this is something else that's come up in the master plan committee, is how to preserve the large historic homes, which you're already doing with that. And one focus we might have is those big estates that have those large homes using this zoning, using that as a way to qualify where the zoning is applicable. And then using that, the zoning, to help preserve those by splitting them however we do it. And then allow something like this, which preserves plenty of open space and allows. But I think the possibility of the large home being the determining factor, a pre-existing historic home is the determining factor, could help narrow down some of the sites where town meeting might be worried about something that applies across the board.
A bylaw that would encourage historic preservation of some sort.
Yeah, and we've lost a lot of historic buildings over the past few years. So I think there are certainly people at town meeting and in the town as a whole who would appreciate some way of doing that. So meets your needs as far as the zoning goes, but could apply to some of the other larger estates.
It's a nice transition zone of completely general, but with these sites specific.
Exactly.
Well, and, and I happen to be aware of some of, some of the other sites they've spoken about tonight, and they have some elements that might lend themselves well to that kind of thinking.
Great.
Well, I personally think that the neighbors have a say. In other words, if the neighbors at the Carberry estate are not interested in, if we had your density, seventy condominium units with a Carberry house developed into two or three condos, I personally would respect that. And the grand zoning saying that the planning board will determine where to put condominiums and if the neighbors object, the planning board will listen carefully and possibly respect their feelings. Don't like it. Doesn't, I don't think the town is particularly eager to condoize à la Brando or Braintree. And I think that this is a matter that needs to be undertaken with some care, rather than just open up the floodgates and say, if you want condos, Milton now welcomes them. And the planning board is the gatekeeper. And the planning board will determine what's good and what is not. Don't think it would pass. Don't think it's going anywhere. Don't think it would be good for the town. I think that your proposed zoning is, should be developed to a point where it's likely to get support. And I think that the neighbors have to feel that it protects them, not trust the planning board, they'll do the right thing. You need four votes here.
So we'll just have to see what we come up with that would address your concerns, Alex.
Well, we have a signed bylaw that has to be written. But, you know, the master plan committee is supposed to be coming up with some, I mean, I haven't seen any strong support for condominiums. I know that Tim Kernan wants to speak and we'll let him.
We should probably let him speak.
Just because it's probably a good thing to do right now. Why don't you come up and join us, Tim?
Oh, I will.
Well, good. Make some room for him.
Tim Kernan, Brushill Road and president of the Brushill Neighborhood Association. A number of things have been going through my mind as I've been listening to this conversation, but I, first of all, want to start by reiterating the comments that Ned made about how I think the Neighborhood Association has enjoyed working with not only Ned, but the developer, because we've been able to have a good, solid dialogue. They've listened to what we've, we've had to say. They've responded. They've demonstrated their willingness to respond and listen. It's been, it's been good. And I think that, that the neighbors themselves have been reasonable in their approach to this. And so I think all this has sort of come together. We had a meeting on Monday night. all this has sort of come together. Um, we had a meeting on Monday night. Um, there is, and the neighborhood association has sort of some work in their lap, which we've not obviously had a chance to digest and get back, uh, to, to the developer on. But I thought I'd mention a couple of things. One is, we started off, when we met a couple of weeks ago, uh, as neighbors to try to figure out what the approach to this would be. We took the, we took the approach that we wanna come up with a theme. We'll start with giving them the thought of a theme and then go from there. Pick a theme and develop it out. And after you develop the theme, things are gonna fall out of that. Um, historic preservation, open space preservation, architecture, all that stuff. Um, so my comment to you might be, as you look at trying to frame a, a bylaw to address this going forward, set up a structure by which the developer can work with the neighborhood association to come up with a theme that guides the whole development. It sets a tone for the whole development. Um, I think that was very helpful from, from our point of view. And it, it may give you an answer to the issue you were talking about here in terms of how to come up with a general bylaw that can then be made specific, as Ned was talking about. Um, the specifics would come in the implementation of the theme, um, whether it's a Carberry Estate where one might take more of an open space preservation approach to a theme. How do you maximize open space and make it look, feel, feel open? Um, yet, on, on, on this lot, there may be more of a historical tone or something. But it's the theme that sets the criteria that are gonna drive the site plan review and the characteristics of the site plan review. So that's, that's my comment there. Um, I, I think that relative to, to this plan, uh, while I've got some positive feedback from it, I did get a couple of comments that said, gee, it'd be nice to have the buildings cut back a little bit, less numbers. Not throwing that out here, but just saying it's a topic for discussion, which we'd like to come back to and discuss. Um, the, um, the, there was one other, uh, issue that, oh, yes. Um, in terms of the, of the bylaw and, and to get to one of the members' comments earlier, um, I don't see this development as preserving open space. This is not preserving open space. This may be providing some elbow room for people to work and play in. It's not an open space preservation thing. And as I read the bylaw, it talks about the purpose, and I realize it's a draft, purpose is to, is to provide, uh, open space preservation. This is not doing that. Uh, and I don't, I don't mean to suggest it should be. I'm just suggesting that, that this may not be the, 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 the place where one can attempt to, to maintain open space. We've tried to impress upon the developer the need to maintain the, the visual open space qualities as you drive by Brushill Road, and we think they've done that. So that's sort of our interpretation, uh, of that. The same sort of holds true for historic preservation. Yes, the house will be preserved. Yes, that's great. It's gonna be cool to live in it. I'm sure when it gets done, it's gonna be a really neat structure. It's gonna have, have some demand to it. Um, but I don't necessarily think that, again, this development is qualifying as a vehicle by which historic preservation is being conducted. Um, and, um, that's, those are my comments.
Well, thank you.
And I, you know, I think that the, uh, having the neighborhood association involved in this process is, in my mind, absolutely critical. And I, I would encourage that whatever process you evolve for a bylaw, from a bylaw perspective, encourages and allows that to happen. The neighbors are the ones that get impacted by this. The neighbors are the ones that the minute they hear the next door property is up for sale, their dander goes up. They get scared. And by, by setting up a method by which they can become involved in this process and to some extent, I won't say have control, but they know they can have an open discussion and a dialogue that is, that is being listened to. It is absolutely critically important, particularly as the town's under pressure to, to, to address all these other issues. Um, a general bylaw that just allows somebody to come in here and, and get a passing vote from you and then get the bulldozers out, I think is a scary proposition. So I would encourage you not to do that. Thank you.
Good job, Tim.
Well, uh, I'm, you know, I'd, if, if it's, if it's out there and the master plan committee can come up with some proposed zoning.
It's not gonna be the master plan committee that comes up. It's going to be the planning board.
Who do you suggest?
Brian, I already volunteered. And you're in luck.
You work on some general zoning and I'll work on some specific zoning.
Fair enough.
Uh, we'll see how we do.
I just wanna add one last comment, just in response to something Mr. Kernan said. I think, you know, I think, I, I wanna be careful to, to point out that the planning process and the, and the fact that we meet here publicly twice a month, um, the, the purpose of that is, is to give the neighborhood a forum to come in and speak publicly, not even just behind the closed doors of, of a meeting between the neighborhood and not, not suggesting they were closed necessarily, but out of the public purview of a meeting between the developer and the neighborhood. This is the public forum in which the neighborhood can provide their feedback, upon which the planning board should be making its decision.
Although it's also helpful for the developer to meet with the neighborhood before they come here. Exactly.
I agree. I'm not suggesting that shouldn't happen, but I am suggesting that certainly a public, a general bylaw is not in any way intended to cut out the neighborhood. I would actually argue that it's providing the basis upon which the planning board has the right to imply certain restrictions to a project in response to the neighborhood.
Well, I think the condominium developments would have to be a special permit process. They're not going to be by rights.
Absolutely. They cannot be by rights.
Yeah, exactly. So...
Absolutely.
Now, one thing I was thinking when, uh, Tim said that it's been a valuable process. Uh, I agree, it can be a very valuable process. And Ned, you deserve credit because for that development up on Milton Hill, you, uh, you've made it clear to the, um, to the developer that, uh, working with the, uh, working with the neighborhood was essential. And, uh, you two have teamed up and, uh, done the same thing. Uh, in the landscaping zoning, once again, uh, work with the neighborhood as best you can. And, but sometimes a developer shows up and the developer doesn't want to and won't listen. Uh, and, uh, presents his plans that will bring the neighborhood in and he'll sit there for a couple of hours and then that'll be it. Uh, so it's not a, it's not a failsafe.
It, it's not a failsafe, but, um, and I appreciate those comments, Alex, because, um, a number of people have said to me, they were amazed that how quickly Milton Hill probably got permitted. And they were...
Two years?
Some of them were surprised to hear that. We had spent, um, more than eighteen months in meetings with neighbors and the revitalization committee molding and shifting and crafting that plan before we filed. And we still spent another, you know, nine months through a combination of Board of Appeals and the planning board to get multiples of permits. Um, it's the only way, it's really the only way that you can effectively do it. You have to pay attention to what, um, neighbors want. And, you know, in some cases, you come out of the block with an idea and you don't have time, well, the negative happens before you have a chance to deal with what you're really trying to get at. Those fail. And I think the ones where you only conduct neighborhood process, when you come before the planning board and you spend an hour or two, I think those fail as well because you're not really achieving anything. So, anyway, that's my, that's my two cents on that.
Ned?
I'd just like to say that, uh, I've probably been a member of the board for, for about twelve years. And, uh, we owe a debt of gratitude to Mr. Whiteside for the extraordinary work he does in the shadows, more or less. Could, takes to go way to his hut and wear him and work on it. Many creative people are like that. But I just wanna say, when, when Mr. Whiteside talks, I, I pay close attention. Thank you, Will.
We all do.
Well, uh, okay. So, uh, that segues nicely into, uh, anyone else want to be heard? Come on up and, uh, be heard.
My name's Tucker Smith. Sixteen seventy-two Canton Avenue since nineteen seventy-nine. This property abuts, um, the Bartol property on one side, the Blue Hills Reservation on the other, and, uh, Kenneth R. Carberry property on the other. And, um, I've been encouraged to hear, uh, I've been away from Milton for a number of years, um, about fourteen, actually. Um, and so to come back, uh, and find that there is, um, some sensitive conversations going on between developers and neighborhood groups, um, going back to probably the nineteen-eighties. Um, the late David Jeffries and I founded an organization which was then known as the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. Um, that is now sort of defunct. However, last night, um, about twenty neighbors from Canton Avenue came together and met, um, to, it was more of an educational opportunity. Um, they're not, there's not a lot of experience among the neighbors in terms of citizen activism, um, but there is interest and there's great concern. Um, so it was really more of an opportunity to, a primer, if you will, about forty B, cluster zoning, um, possible townhouse zoning, whatever. Um, and at the end of the evening, um, an informal, you know, sort of consensus was taken and there was great willingness to, to work with, you know, whatever, to try to create, um, good zoning for what may very much affect, um, not only our neighborhood, but, you know, others and open space in particular. So...
Great.
Excellent.
Glad to hear it.
Anyone else? All right. So, uh...
Brian?
See you on the tenth.
Have something by the tenth.
Got it, sir.
And, uh, I will too.
Sounds great.
Dueling zoning, I love it.
And we'll look forward to participating as well.
Yeah.
We'll look forward to participating.
Oh, yeah, you, you get to participate. No question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your...
All right. Well, thanks for, uh, an interesting discussion.
Do you want me here?
It certainly, uh, what, do you want you here?
Me too.
It certainly, you know, I, I, don't get me wrong, Brian. I have, uh, I started out saying we've gotta, uh, we've gotta do the, uh, we've gotta do the general. And I...
Alex, I'm not getting you wrong at all. I'm enjoying the discussion immensely. No worries.
And I, uh, came, eventually came to the conclusion that the specific was probably as one good way to go as any.
We'll see.
I appreciate the debate.
We'll see. Uh, okay. Now, uh, I had, this has to do...
See you on the tenth.
Okay. This has to do with, uh, one thirty-one Elliot Street. And as you know, the owners, we call the owner, whatever the LLC is, it's controlled by, um, the Conleys. There's Jerry Conley and Steve Conley and, uh, uh, they had a, we, we adopted some zoning for the Hendry's Building down at Central Avenue, uh, subsection J of section either three or six, or in any event, subsection J, uh, zoning for a mixed-use development. And we went on and on and, uh, came very close to, uh, very close to getting a development which was reasonably acceptable. Uh, but the Conleys insisted that we vote on something that was, had some, uh, had some, not tragic flaws, but some, uh...
Flaws. Fixable flaws.
Fixable flaws. Fixable flaws.
Or not fixed.
Uh, so we, we turned down their plan. Um, and, uh, then, about a year later, Senator Joyce said, can't we get this back on track? And so, uh, a number of us, myself included, worked with Senator Joyce and we came very, very close to modifying the, uh, modifying the agreement, uh, to address the issues that the planning board had raised in its denial. Uh, we moved the building back ten feet and we, uh, it, it, we basically, uh, there, there were still a few issues whether or not the public benefit being provided by the development was sufficient. And there weren't nineteen parking spaces for use by the business district, uh, which seemed to be a fairly significant public benefit. And there was some question about, about traffic. Uh, but the, the effort founded when the selectmen and the Conleys couldn't come to agreement over transfer of the town land at zero Central Avenue. And that's a portion of the site, uh, right on the corner of Central Avenue and the trolley tracks. And it's about seven thousand square feet. And, uh, everyone thought that it was vital to any development that would go on there, um, and that the town zoning it would, um, ensure that whatever development that built would have the support of the town. In any event, uh, the Conleys and the town got this close, got really close to transferring the, uh, town land to the Conleys, but there were a couple of issues, couple of small issues that in, when I look at them, I think that they should have been fixable. But they didn't get fixed and the procurement for the town land ran out. And thereafter, the Conleys came in with that mixed-use development that we were talking about had thirty-eight apartment units, I think ninety-some-odd parking spaces, uh, and it had a commercial, a ground floor, a commercial presence. Uh, after the Conleys couldn't secure the town land, they said, well, we will pursue a forty B development. And they have come up with a plan that has received approval from the Mass Housing Partnership for fifty-seven apartment rental units, uh, and seventy parking spaces, seventy-one parking spaces. Twenty-five percent of the units would be affordable. And, uh, they would all count on the subsidized housing inventory. Uh, so, uh, recently, uh, Senator Joyce called me and Katie Conlon, the chairman of the Selectmen, uh, and Jerry Conley, the elder of the Conleys, Steve being his son. And, and Senator Joyce said, is there any way we could get the mixed-use development back on track because it's a, uh, a better development than the forty B? The forty B is built around the town's parcel. Uh, and, uh, it's a strange configuration, but it is, uh, they've got fifty-seven units, uh, seventy-one parking spaces, uh, all emptying out onto Elliot Street. The, uh, mixed-use development would use Central Avenue as their, uh, primary means of access and egress. Um, and the Con- And the Conleys indicated, they said, look, we are pretty committed to the Mass Housing Partnership and the development, the 40B development we're proposing. And I, the discussion turned to what would be best for the town, and it was felt that the town would spend quite a lot of money, at least $250,000, tearing down its portion of the current ice cream plant, and perhaps more, and would get a 7,000 square foot piece of land surrounded by a big overly dense apartment building, assuming the 40B got approved, and that as town planning, this was far from being in the town's best interest, and that the mixed-use development with the revisions that we developed last summer would be a better way to go. And Senator Joyce and I and Katie all agreed on this, and Jerry Conley was, he was non-committal about it. And the question was, could we get the mixed-use development of the zoning back on track? And the suggestion was made, and Jerry made clear, you know, I'm not going to give up on my 40B development. I've been through, I don't like the way I've been treated, and I don't want to do it again. So the suggestion was made as follows. The planning board, and this was sort of a mutual suggestion worked out by some of the participants, that the planning board would revoke its disapproval of the Conleys' application, with the consent of the Conleys, of course, and a new modified application, which would be what we worked out last summer, would be substituted. We would then notice a public hearing on the modified application, and we would conduct that public hearing, and the planning board would then determine whether or not to approve the modified development. And it would have the, it would have the benefit of the public hearing, the public would have every right to make their views known, and the planning board would do what it felt was in the best interest of the town. In the meantime, assuming the planning board is willing to entertain the vacation of the denial, the submission of a modified plan at a new public hearing on that with a vote anticipated, I would anticipate that we, once we had the modified application, we would notice the public hearing, we would hold the public hearing, we would take it as long as it takes to receive the comment, and then we would vote up or down on the plan. So, in the meantime, assuming the board was willing to do that, the selectmen would request the opportunity to transfer its parcel of land to the Conleys in return for the Conleys' commitment to tear down the building by September. In other words, this is, this, the selectmen would request special legislation to do this. It would go to the current session of the legislature, which ends at the end of July, and we would hope that Brian Joyce could, could see that it got passed. The selectmen would then, they would have the ability to negotiate with the Conleys for a disposition price which could include demolition of the building, which they determined to be in the town's best interest. If that passed, with the special permit that we would have issued prior to, the disposition would not have to happen, any, any decision we made on the special permit would be contingent on the Conleys getting possession of the town's portion. And the special permit would require the building to come down in September, and whatever else, whatever else the board after public hearing determined to be reasonable and appropriate. But I would see, think it would be along the lines of the special permit that we wrote last time, except the conclusion would be different if it, if it, if it was approved. And if it wasn't, we could, we could use the same form to indicate why we didn't approve it. So, that's the, that's the, this particular proposal was developed in an effort to provide an alternative to the 40B development which is being pursued. And if it goes nowhere, then the 40B, the Conleys will pursue the 40B development and whatever happens, happens. But this would, if successful, I think, result in a far better development in, in the Central Avenue area. So what do you think? You've got some thoughts?
Question first, why revoke the initial denial? Why not just simply submit a new application?
I did that because I didn't want to request that the Conleys have to pay an application fee.
Waive the application fee, but still require a new complete application?
With a waiver, if, with a waiver of the application, the fee, the modified, the modified, it would be the same thing. But that was the only reason to revoke would be to.
I wouldn't revoke, make it a clean application.
Is, is there a legal reason to, you can't apply for the same application that was previously denied within a certain amount of time?
Two years, and not the exact same one.
So there's been enough modifications to distinguish the?
Well, these have, unless there have been substantial modifications, and this building has been moved 10 feet, and there have been substantial modifications.
Yeah, the denial was on the initial application, so although during the process of discussion, or the public hearing process, we had worked with the Conleys and come up with some alterations that had never been formally included, so the original denial, or the denial was on the original application.
Substantial modification, so that covers that, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
But I don't think we should revoke that denial because that denial was of that specific.
I would.
I would be happy, you know, if the selectmen want to negotiate the waiver of the fee with them, that works, I mean, they're already negotiating.
Who waives the fee, Bill?
It's a really good question because you already did it once.
Okay.
They applied twice.
That's right, they did apply twice.
And you used the application fee from the first one for the second one, and I know since then, just in the last week or so, Steve Conley's requested his application fee back for the denied permit.
I don't think you can do that.
I don't think so either, but.
I'm pretty sure.
You can, you can ask, and he asked.
All right, so we have precedent that we can use this fee for another application. We have established a precedent.
You did.
Well, good for the board. So a new application with the modified, once we get the papers in order, and you could, you and I could collaborate to make sure the application was complete.
That brings me to my next point, which is, I don't, one of the problems we had with the last public hearing process is that we, the board, were trying to determine whether or not the application was A, complete, and B, met the zoning, while the members of the public and the neighborhood were quite rightly concerned about the impact of the building on their, on their neighborhood. So I would not want to schedule a public hearing again until the board has determined that the application is A, complete, which I'm happy to assist with, and B, actually meets the zoning. Leaving aside the question of the public benefit for the bonus, because I'm assuming they're going to apply for the bonus, that can be discussed during the public hearing, but we need to make sure that the height, the definition of the basement, all those other technical issues.
We determined this last year.
Yeah.
And it can be, there is a need for speed here. If, if the board dawdles, nothing's going to happen, and the Conleys have said, you know, we have two thoughts about this, but if the board do dawdles, they're prepared to pursue their 40B application and not, you know, I.
If they give us a complete application.
If we, we would help them develop the complete application, and once it was determined complete.
And that it met the zoning, okay.
We would mark it. We don't have to determine if there's compliance because if at the public hearing we determine there hasn't been compliance, we can vote it down.
But my point is, if you're suggesting basically a night of a public hearing.
Yes.
There's not going to be enough time in a single night to hear from all the people who want to discuss this article and determine compliance with the zoning. Haven't thrown away that matrix. It'd be easy enough to, that I did to determine compliance with zoning last time.
I.
It would be easy enough to update it, but it needs to be done before the public hearing.
I hear you, but I don't think that the Conleys are going to be interested in doing it.
They have two weeks, what, two weeks from the submission of the application till the public hearing?
They have all kinds of time, but I don't think they're going to do it.
Publicize.
I think they're going to say that.
But that has to be publicized between the receipt of the application and the time of the public hearing that gives us time to determine compliance.
You don't have time for publication, for them to appear on July 10th.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we don't have time for that. We have to, we have to, look, I have, I am satisfied that the application, the modified application, meets the zoning requirements and.
Have you seen it?
And therefore, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think we need to have a meeting to determine whether it meets the zoning requirements, but if people want to look at it and, and see.
Have you seen the, have you seen the plan that?
Elevations plans?
That meets this?
What?
Have you seen a plan that meets the zoning?
Have you seen a full modified application?
No, I haven't. The full modified application has to be put together, but I have determined that with the modifications that we've discussed, the, the plan meets the zoning. This, I understand this is simply an effort to avoid a 40B, and if the board feels that it's too hard and they can't do it, then let the selectmen fight the 40B.
I would prefer to have a development that uses up the entire, both, both those corners, the one on the T and the one on Elliot, and that has the commercial space activating the ground level, but I'm not prepared to approve something that doesn't meet the zoning when that was our issue last time. All I'm saying is we need the time to do the technical review.
I believe that it does meet the zoning.
But we have no proof of that. We need the plans, we need the elevations, and we need a chance to look at that.
I understand that, I understand that, and the, as I say, the Conleys don't want to do what they did the last time around. They just don't want to do it.
I don't think they have to do that, but what I'm saying is that we need the information to make that determination prior to any public hearing. And it can be at the beginning of the public hearing, we look at a chart that says, here are the requirements, yes, they meet it, okay, let's start the public hearing. It doesn't have to be a separate meeting, but it has to be done.
We need to do this quickly. If it's going to be done, it's got to be done quickly.
So when are they?
Does the, does the planning board need to act to trigger the legislative action, or can that be done separately?
I don't know if the selectmen are going to request that the, that the, that they be authorized without procurement to dispose of the land if the planning board is hesitant about embarking on the project. I think that they're going to, I think they need some, a modicum of enthusiasm from this board about the plan because if they don't get it, I, I think they may get discouraged.
How quickly would they be able to submit?
They have to do it, the legislative session ends at the end of July.
No, I meant for the, the planning board to, to have the plans and the elevations and the other element of the modified application, how quickly can they do that? You said time is, is important.
Well, I'm prepared to work with them to say what we need and put together the application. Hopefully, there's a bin of stuff somewhere that we can take out the most recent, the most recent stuff and get it all together and make some copies and mark it for hearing.
Well, I'd express great enthusiasm to having the board reconsider it. I think the loss of commercial here is a huge negative impact for this area, and I think we could do it in one meeting as long as we do the technical review prior to opening the public hearing. I certainly think we have the capacity to, again, make an effort.
Yeah.
And I would certainly be enthusiastic about doing that.
Yeah.
I think we, the opportunity to try to get commercial back on the table is huge.
Yeah, I am not opposed at all to looking at it again, I just want to make sure that the process is solid and meets the needs of both the board and the public. As I said, it's a better plan if we use both sites, town and Conleys, it's a better plan if we have the commercial space there, but we have to make sure, I think Peter Mullin mentioned transparency earlier, we have to make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and that's all I'm asking for.
All right, so you're enthusiastic.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You couldn't tell?
That's, that's good. Now, Ed, you, apart from the fact that we have, we had, you know, it'd be hard because negotiating it, the Conleys wouldn't have come if we tried to negotiate it here, which would have been, made it difficult. And Senator Joyce wouldn't, wouldn't have come if we tried to do it here, and he's an important part of the, of the structure. So with your, your concerns duly noted, would you say that you were enthusiastic?
For this new proposal to come, you say, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we've got unanimous enthusiasm.
We need a emotion.
And we have a general sense that we would.
Consensus works. Confidence this works.
We would use our precedent of allowing the application fee to be used again. It's sort of like a forever stamp.
Alex, I, I think that you and Bill, in the next two weeks, you're talking to the Conley's, perhaps another member of the board. Just get this thing prepared, get a new trust established between the board and the Conley's. It's going to work.
I have one comment, and that would be that I do believe it has to be a completely new application.
It's going to be...
Not your de novo part.
It's going to be a new application.
Good, because Brian couldn't participate.
It's going to be a new application.
And Mike either, because Mike came in at the very end, so, and we needed the floor. The other thing is, as you're assisting them in putting this new application together, if they went ahead and did a checklist, which I think they did at one point, of how their project in fact meets the zoning, it would save them and us a great deal of time.
I don't think that, I think that...
I know.
I think that the time is, we are on an expedited schedule, so we will just use our time to great effect.
Okay. But Bill pointed out that Mr. McDermott had actually done that to them originally, done that for them originally, so they just need to update it.
We'll just have him...
The new lawyer?
Have the new lawyer.
No, no, he died, didn't he?
Yes, we'll have the new lawyer update it.
I guess we won't. Okay, so I think that, that takes care of that.
Do you want a super quick master plan update?
Oh, yes.
All right, so...
We have someone waiting in the audience still.
Oh, to speak?
Right.
The A and R.
The A and R.
That's right, Marion came back.
Oh, we've got the A and R.
And Bob came back from Marion.
Okay, come on back, Mr. Sheffield.
I defer all updates to you.
I was afraid that you were going to move to a attorney.
You would have shouted out, though, right?
The reason why I'm here is to permit the division of property, as it says in the application, to extend the size of the adjacent lot while retaining Lot 1, which is fully compliant with all residency dimensional requirements for a buildable lot. I have been unable to get in touch with my client as a member of the Governance Council. He seems to be out every night, and tonight is no exception. And I would suggest that the board endorse it with the following additional points. Number one is add the square footage to the property at 9 Huller Street, Lot H13-1. Two is add a note that says Lot H13-1 does not meet the area requirement of the current zoning bylaw. And also adding a note that says, "The buildings constructed prior to the adoption of zoning do not meet current setback requirements." We're talking about three properties here. According to the assessors' records, one property was constructed in 1867. Another property was constructed in 1872. And the third property was constructed in 1877. I, I think with these additional notations, there will be no misunderstanding by anyone reading the, the plan. And if it is necessary, for whatever reason, to go to the Board of Appeals, then we will go to the Board of Appeals, and we will act in accordance with all the zoning bylaws. I would not want to decide tonight whether we would bring it up to 7,500 square feet, the lot, which is now 4,190 square feet, or whether we would go to the Board of Appeals and ask for it to be 5,000 square feet or whatever. I, I think that that could be done separate from the process tonight, which is just to permit the breaking up, breaking off a little of, of the 475, which is an oversized lot, and be able to proceed with the sale of the property, which is scheduled for next week.
Okay, now, read the language again, because we're going to have to, Bill is going to, you're going to, did you Xerox it? You're going to give that to...
I will give this to Bill.
He's going to give that, and you can copy it for yourself.
Yes.
But we're going to want it in writing. Now, but what does it say?
Add the square footage, 4,190 square feet.
You might add the frontage dimension.
It's not on the plan, and I don't think that, that...
Well, I mean, it, it has enough frontage.
Okay. But add the square footage to the, to Plot H13-1.
Okay.
Add the note, Lot H13-1 does not meet...
Lot, lot, right?
Lot.
Right.
Does not meet the current area requirement, I'm sorry, the area requirement of the current zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And third, "The buildings constructed prior to the adoption of zoning do not meet the current setback requirements."
Okay, make those three and four?
Yes.
Okay. So those would be additional requirements, Bill.
I have a question.
Three and four.
Because, yes, I understand the number nine, number 487, and 475, but that doesn't address the garage.
Why?
Everything you said works, except the garage. I do believe that you have the garage that splits over two lots.
It's, it's two garages.
And you, you just...
And that's a building constructed prior to the adoption of zoning.
That garages?
Yeah.
Cool, I don't know about that.
Oh, God, that goes back long before 39, I'll tell you.
You're going to put that one in, too. You put in three buildings, you're going to have to put in the fourth. Yes?
What?
I said the buildings.
Not three.
Not three, the.
Not three, the.
The buildings. The buildings. Now, that sure doesn't meet setback requirements, since there's no setback whatsoever.
But it's covered under the buildings.
But it would, it would be covered under the buildings.
Right.
Okay, the buildings.
I think it's, I think it's okay.
Excellent.
But that's because it's 930.
Would you like a motion on that?
Okay, so with those, with those, with those changes...
Still moved.
We have, the, the motion to authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan is not requiring the subdivision approval. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck with the ZBA.
Yeah.
All right.
Very quick master, very quick master plan update.
We want it...
You, you want the full thing? Okay, fine, I could, I could take a couple of hours. We are, we are done with our round tables. We are moving into the point at which the consultant team is working on the actual plan as far as drafting it. The master plan committee is currently reviewing the inventory reports, which are the existing conditions in Milton. We will also be doing a public outreach during the summer, and we'll be confirming that. We'll have boards up at the town hall and the library, letting people know what we've been doing and asking questions. There will be a media campaign. We will also have two articles on July 10th for the board to consider for the October town meeting. And that's what I have for you.
Well, excellent.
And I believe it was under five minutes.
All right, do we have any, a move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.